Roll call.
Sure, I guess I can do that. Mr. Baxendale?
Present.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Byron?
Present.
Mr. Muschek?
Here.
Mr. Ferguson?
Here. Good evening.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Patches? And Mr. Scholman?
Here.
And I don't see anybody else unless you are here and I just can't see you on my screen.
Steve, I'm here. Tammy Langgallis.
Darius Williams is present.
Thank you. I cannot see either of you, so I'll take your word for it.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Darius.
All right, Brian, can you put me in?
See you on the list, Lou, under attendees. Six and, oh, it says six. No, five. I don't see you.
I can see Lou.
Yeah, and I can see, I can see most of you as well on my phone. Well, Brian, see if you can, if you can work it out. In the meantime, I don't think it's fair to those people who've come to the meeting to hold, to hold the meeting up any further. So let's begin. Excuse me. We have two public hearings this evening. The first is 2021-42 SP Kevin O'Brien, seven and nine Glenwood Avenue, construction of six dwelling units in addition to an existing nine unit development. Let me explain for the public who may not have participated before in these hearings. Mr. O'Brien or his representative will make a presentation regarding their proposed development. The members of the commission during that presentation are free to ask questions that they wish. When the presentation has completed, we will open up the meeting to the public at that time. Brian will explain how to raise your hand so that you can be recognized if you wish to speak. We only permit people to speak once, so you're encouraged to say everything you wish to say with, with that one opportunity that you have. We ask that first you give us your name, your address, and then please proceed with, with your remarks. All we ask is that you keep them civil. Once all of the questions by the public have been asked, we will allow the, either, either Mr. O'Brien or his representative, the opportunity to respond to any comments that have been made during that time. The members of the commission will again have an opportunity to ask any questions they have regarding the project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Brien or his representative.
Great, thank you very much. My, my name is Kevin O'Brien. I am a real estate broker in Wilton, Connecticut, and I'm representing Glenwood Avenue LLC, who is the owner of the property. I'm just their agent. My previous life, I was a, a surveyor for 25 years at Ryan and Falls Surveyors, and I've been a land use consultant for quite a while, mostly based in Wilton, even though I grew up in Norwalk. I haven't been to you guys before. It was nice of, when I got through this and all of a sudden, part of, part of this went to the fire department, and it went to Broderick Sawyer, and I go, Broderick Sawyer, how many Broderick Sawyers could there be? And I said, so I reached out to Broderick and I said, Broderick, did you graduate Brian McMahon in 1975 with me? And he said, yes, OB, it's me. I go, all right, it can't be too many Broderick Sawyers. So anyway, I represent Glenwood Avenue LLC. It's a building company from Wilton. Polito Builders are, is the actual name of the, of the actual builders as they're gonna build. So in nineteen, 2010, they bought nine Glenwood Avenue. And in 2000, and just right after that, they ended up building nine units on that piece of property. With those nine units done, the neighbor approached them in 2020, the neighbor approached them to sell their property next door, which is seven Glenwood. So the game plan is here is they're gonna combine seven and nine Glenwood. There's an existing nine units on nine Glenwood, and we were proposing tonight six additional units on seven Glenwood, which, like I said, they purchased in December of 2020. So it's grand total, grand total of 15 units, which ends up getting us into a special permit. I guess if it was 12, 12 or less, we would not be here, but since we're at 15, that's why we're here. We contacted all of the municipalities, everyone involved with this, and we got responses back. We revised our plans a couple of times. So now I believe we've, we've got the final plans that are in. Today I received a inland wetlands minor, we have a minor application at inland wetlands, and today I received the approval for that. So before the meeting tonight, we got an approval for, we are disturbing some area in the upland, upland reserve area. Very, very minimal at that point, but we did receive the approval this, this afternoon, so we should be good. With me, we're gonna be brief, I would think, tonight, but, but we want to be thorough, thorough and brief. I don't see, I do see him now. So with me tonight is the engineer, which is Dean Martin of Grumman Engineering in Norwalk. He is with us. Thomas Wormser from Ty and Bond is our traffic consultant. He is here with us. Dennis Peters, Dennis Peters Design, who drew the actual building plans, is here with us to answer any questions he may have, and I don't see Tom Delius, but if there are any questions, maybe Tom Delius will show up, any surveying questions or zoning questions that you may have. So with that, I am gonna give the floor to Dean Martin of Grumman Engineering to go over his site plan and give you an idea what we're doing. And I believe Dean has, will share the screen with, with the site plan that he has in place. So I'm gonna leave this up to Dean now. I see him, but he's still muted. Is he? Dean, are you there? I don't see him. I assume he's here because I see his name on the screen, so I would assume he wouldn't, the name wouldn't come up if he's not here, I would hope. But maybe I can have Thomas talk a little bit about the traffic while we're waiting for Dean to come on. Thomas was our traffic consultant and, and did the traffic report that's in your file. Thomas, you can hit, hit the high notes of your file, of your, of your report.
Will do. Everyone can hear me just fine?
Yeah.
Okay, good to know. All right, so the, the traffic report focused on the expansion of the development from nine to 15 units, so an additional six being constructed on the, the private residence that's currently located at seven Glenwood Avenue. And in, in doing so, we first evaluated the existing conditions. We looked at the, the transit amenities and the pedestrian and bicycle amenities and vehicular amenities on Glenwood Avenue in the vicinity of the site. So the, the Norwalk Transit District and CT Transit both have service on US Route One, which is just to the south of the, the project area, located just a little bit west and a little bit east of the intersection of US One and Glenwood Avenue. And then we also performed a field visit and we took some note of the vehicular and pedestrian traffic volumes that were out there. So traffic was overall observed to be really light. It's a residential, typically residential neighborhood road doesn't, it's not really a, a through road or anything. And we did notice pedestrians that were walking the area on sidewalks or within the street. We investigated crash history at the, the site and the adjacent intersections. We observed that there were 11 crashes in a three-year period, none of which were serious in terms of injuries or fatalities. There's no real discernible pattern amongst the crashes either. So in the proposed conditions, we're adding six units at the seven Glenwood property and then bringing our new total up to 15. The, the site will be reconfigured so that the site driveways will be in a clockwise loop with entering only at the south end of the site, exiting at the north end of the site. And sidewalk will be constructed along the frontage of the site as well to better facilitate that pedestrian access. For intersection site distance, this is taken at the site driveways as well as stopping site distance to make sure adequate sight lines were provided for safe vehicular operation in and out of the site. The 280 feet is required in both directions. And using a decision point 10 feet back, we found that that site triangle was obstructed and we provided ample site distance in both directions for safe operations. Using the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which is the industry standard for land use code 220, which is multifamily housing low rise, which describes this land use, we generated a pretty low amount of traffic. There's some figures that were included in the traffic report. Table two, that will show you that we generated three trips in the weekday morning from the, the additional six units and five in the afternoon. And then the grand total site of 15 units, we generate eight in the morning and 11 in the afternoon. These volumes were then distributed to the, the local roadway network, and we assumed 50% would go to US Route One to the north and 50% US Route One to the south. Overall, very small amount of daily traffic being generated. Due to this, we were able to conclude that there is really minimal traffic impact from this development, and we also did not observe any potential for safety issues from the crash history or from the ISD, the intersection site distance that we're providing at the driveways. And the site also expands the sidewalk connectivity by developing the concrete sidewalk along the frontage. Happy to answer any questions about traffic, or we can move on to the site elements if we're ready.
Thanks, Thomas. I, I am, I am surprised that our engineer is not here. I don't see him. He was supposed to be here. His name was up there just a second ago. So if I can, let me, let me just have Dennis Peters go over a little bit of what the new units are like, what, how big they are, what sort of bedrooms they have in them, and I'll have him go over that and hopefully Dean will show.
Evening. My name is Dennis Peters, designer in Wilton, Connecticut for the applicant. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So as described by Kevin, you know, we're building three, three structures, each with two units each. And both encompass small modest kitchens, living area, half bath on the first floor, and then two bedrooms and a full bath on the second floor. The, the front building is approximately 920 square feet per unit. They progress a little bit larger as, as you get back into the property. Unit two, the apartments are 1050 square footage and unit three has 1120 square feet per unit. So all, all similar layouts, but again, they progressively get a little bit larger as you go back. Does there, do I need to share my screen? Does everybody have a copy of the plan?
People may not have copy of the plan right in front of them, so I'd appreciate it if you'd share your screen.
Sure thing. We jump to that.
I, I have one quick question before. Are these gonna be rentals or are these gonna be sold?
Yeah, they're gonna be rental, rental units. Right now, they, they, the nine are next door. They've been rented all along, and these will be also rental units.
Great.
So again, similar dynamic.
Be sure.
Sorry to interrupt. So the front unit, again, street-facing, covered front porch to get in, and floor plans progress in a similar fashion. Again, half bath, living area, modest kitchen in each unit. So, and then unfinished basement with laundry and utility room in the lower level basement. Unit two is similar. Again, all the covered entries. We, we made pretty aggressive attempts to make it a logical layout from a, from, from parking to, to entry into the unit, so we didn't just, you know, carbon copy each unit. We kind of played with the, the access points, if you will, from the parking locations to the entrances of, of the units to make it, make it easy for the occupants. Other than that, I won't bore you with the minutia. I think it's pretty straightforward. So if there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
It, it looked to me, excuse me, as if these new units are gonna look very much like the existing units. The, the existing units are not particularly distinguished architecture. Is it possible to add any solar power to these units? And, you know, on, particularly on the roofs, roofs that are facing in the right direction.
I, I did see that comment in, in one of the reviews. There wasn't any consideration given to that, and I'm certainly not a expert or aficionado on, on solar, but I will say that the way the roof lines are is that they pretty much face east-west and not south, which I know is kind of optimal for solar and the units, and the, the structures themselves are not particularly large and overbearing. It's probably a mass of, of structure. I think that's a good thing, but it also doesn't lend itself to a tremendous amount of roof areas. It, it, it wasn't considered as part of the, part of the project, no.
I would, we're, we're rather late in the process here to be sure, and, and, and you, you're certainly correct about the orientation of those roofs. However, if, if you're gonna continue to be doing design work in Norwalk, we would hope that in future buildings, you would take that into consideration. I, I believe that as, as we're rewriting all of our zoning policies that you'll find in the future, that it's something that will require a, a serious look.
Louis, we, we, we discussed that once we got your memos, and the other thing we, Dennis and I talked about also was the idea of these electric cars these days, and, and you have developments that are gonna have more and more electric cars, and they have no charging stations, and I think it would be advantageous to have, you know, at least some sort of criteria in, in this zoning regs that requires either solar panels on X amount of units or that you have charging stations so many per, per dwelling unit. I, I think that's, you know, everything's going so fast these days and we kind of miss the ball, and you have these large apartment developments and they don't have necessarily, unless they have a garage, they don't have necessarily the, the electronic stations to, to get their cars started, so. I, I think it would be advantageous to put those in the regulations, and therefore we didn't see it in there so that we didn't know that maybe we should have taken in, in that, that into consideration at this time.
Yeah, and I, I, I understand that. In, 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 in terms of you're selling these, you know, rental, it also makes sense in terms of attracting renters to have amenities like that, particularly charging stations. But I, I don't want to belabor the point. You know, I, 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 I don't, I don't, I don't want to be beating a, a dead horse here.
Gotcha. We understand. Thanks.
I, I have a question?
Certainly.
Hi, is there only one exit point to these units for each one? Is there a back door, or there's only the front entry is, is used both ways?
There's one, there's one entry porch, but they, they are suitable east-west windows on, obviously the second floor is required in the bedrooms, but also the first floor. We have that ability as well.
So, okay, so, so each, each unit has just one entryway? There, 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 there's no shared between the two?
Correct, correct.
Okay, and for si, and for fire safety, are there sprink, is there sprinkler system?
No, it's not required. There's, there's required party balls and so forth between the units to offer the firewall that are necessary between the two units, but no sprinklers, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question, please?
Please.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. O'Brien. In looking at the design that you showed, the front elevation, could you please tell me the orientation of these buildings? So if you're walking down the sidewalk and you're looking at the buildings, what do you look at and where is the garage relative to what you're looking at?
The one you're looking at now is the street-facing facade.
So then, do these buildings just go front to back, three in a row?
Yes. Yes, unfortunately, Dean isn't here to show his site plan, but yes, they progressed back in a similar orientation, and they, they stretch back from the street going back.
Okay, and if, if the proposal is approved as suggested, you would have something like approximately 56% lot coverage with the buildings, and then what percent of the rest of the property is pavement or tar, macadam, you know, driveway surface?
Can I, no, I don't, Kevin, do you have Dean's latest plan?
I have that. I'll get, I'll get that in a sec.
I, I, I have a site plan, but I don't think it's the latest, the greatest.
No, we added the, we added the zoning table to the, to the survey. It was something that we were lacking, but now we should be on there. I believe we, we are, I, I believe we're allowed like 65%, and I think we're at like 57%.
Building, though, versus pavement?
Yeah, I think site coverage, the total site coverage, I believe, is 65%, and we are at 57, so we're not quite, we don't have as many units as we, we could get. We're entitled to 19 units on this property by the size of the lot. The lot size is 32,000. I know I have it here somewhere, but of course you can't find it when you need it. Here it is. I have it here. So it's the proposed site coverage, the proposed building coverage is the, we're allowed 25% building coverage. There's existing 15.4%, and we're gonna be at the 25% building coverage. So we're gonna be, building coverage-wise, we're gonna be at the max. But as it goes to site coverage, which means the pavement area, we are allowed.
That's the 65%, Kevin.
That's the 65%, correct, and we're gonna be at proposed at 56.7% site cover. So we have a little bit more green area than, than what's required. We did go back and change some of it because I believe in our, our original site plan, we didn't have a recreation area for bike picnic tables and open space, so we added extra, extra of that and revised the parking to make it work. So we're under the proposed coverage calculations, and we're right at the maximum for building.
Okay, can you tell us what the square footage of your recreation area is? Like 10 by 10, 20 by 20?
Oh, no, I, it's, it's substantially more than, than what was required. At one time, we did not have any, and now it's substantially more. I don't have that number handy.
Okay.
Well, no, I have it. I'm sorry. I do have it. Recreation area. The maximum is 2,400 square feet. We were at existing at 1810, and we're now at 2,410 square feet of recreation area.
Okay, thank you.
So we're over.
If I can interject too, the, the interesting thing about combining these two properties is as, as the, the traffic engineer mentioned, we're basically mimicking the traffic flow that's currently on number nine Glenwood, but with combining the properties, we basically created a longer loop, but what that provides is, is a lot more green space in between the, the two development areas, the two properties. So in a sense, by combining the, the properties, we actually gained more green space than we would have had if they were separate, and they both needed their own in and out entry.
Okay.
There we go.
Some of the.
There we go. So that, so there you go. So that existing, that existing center driveway is being removed. That's all turning into green space.
Now, can these properties be divided again and sold separately, or are they under, under one ownership and must they remain under one ownership?
Yes. Yeah, they must remain under one ownership unless they kind of minimize it and sell the units individually. They can do that, but the property is going to be one property from, from this point on. So seven and nine are gonna be combined in order to get.
If it were to remain as two separate properties, we couldn't propose what we're proposing because the building setback couldn't allow it.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it looked like to me, but I just wanted to be sure. We had another situation where there were two properties that were sharing amenities, then suddenly they thought, oh my goodness, we may want to sell one half, and how do we go back and facilitate that? So I'm just sure that this would never be contemplated here.
Correct, that's correct. And, and to let Tammy know, in the new proposed units, there are no garages. There are no garages in the new proposed units. The existing units have garages, but the proposed new ones do not.
So that's why the sketch, I think, that we originally were sent showed a garage in each one, so that's now gone. So nobody's backing out into that center driveway.
Correct, that is correct. And I did check my, my screen, my Zoom screen, and I see that our engineer has arrived, so I'd like to introduce Dean to go over his, the overall site plan quickly, and then hopefully that'll generate a few more questions or, or not any more questions. So Dean, I'm gonna leave the floor to you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I apologize to the commission. I had some technical difficulties. I will review the engineering aspect of the plan. Did that come up?
Oh, there you got me.
Here we go. All right, this is the seven, seven Glenwood is the proposed new building site, nine Glenwood, which exists, which, which currently has three, three-unit buildings is on the north side of the property. So as I, I'm sure was explained previously, there is an existing single-family dwelling located on seven Glenwood, which is to be raised, and three two-unit residential buildings will be constructed, one, two, and three, with a new 12-foot-wide accessway off from Glenwood Avenue, which would, which would come in through the south side of the property, and then blend in with the existing paved driveway, which would then continue around and exit on the north side of number nine Glenwood. As stated, these are three two-unit buildings. The, the, the buildings will be connected with, connected into the municipal sewer system, municipal water system, electric and gas, all. The proposal right now is to tie them into the existing service which exists on the north side of the property. There was a, a brief discussion on parking. We have a parking calculation shown which states that for the combined properties, there will be a requirement of 20 parking spaces for the, for the total number of, of of units. And the two rear buildings on the northern portion of the property have parking underneath the buildings on the lower level. So therefore, we need to provide additional parking spaces for the one building in the front. So therefore, we need to provide additional parking spaces for the one building in the front, which is three units, and then the six units of the proposed new buildings. So that would be a total of twelve parking spaces required. Exterior spaces, which you, we provided, uh, on the western side of the property, six new spaces and six existing spaces. There is a, a, um, an existing drain, or it's more of a drainage ditch, which runs into the property on the north side, um, and then is piped underground through the formerly number nine property. That will, that underground piping will be continued through this property and will tie into the existing storm drain system, which is located on the property to the south of, of here. Um, and we are, uh, currently going through Public Works to, uh, take care of some minor details they have with that plan prior to getting their approval. We looked at the site as far as stormwater runoff goes, and provided stormwater retention consisting of two, uh, separate systems consisting of twenty-four-inch precast galleys. Those will take runoff from the majority of the new paved area as well as the roof, uh, roof drains for all three buildings. Um, and those systems are sized to meet the, uh, zero impact or zero increased runoff for the property before it exits. Um, and again, that, that will be slightly changed to meet, uh, we did have a, uh, a slight increase in the hundred-year storm peak flow, uh, the volume, the peak volume was going to be reduced, but the peak rate of runoff was going to be slightly higher. So we're going to re-adjust that and resubmit that to Public Works. That's in the works. That's in the process right now. I can, uh, let me pull up, I do have a landscape plan, which, uh, and I'll go over the, uh, proposed plantings for the, for the southern section. Can everybody see that plan?
Yeah.
Okay, now this, this green spot, this green shaded area right here, that's where the existing paved area, existing driveway, which we removed, that will be turned into lawn. We've provided, uh, two additional street trees on the front of number seven, um, and buffer plantings all along the western and southern sides of the proposed, uh, redeveloped parcel. There's going to be a total of the thirty-two shrubs along the east, uh, along the south and west parcel. Anti, anti-tracking pad, um, at the entrance as well as, uh, topsoil stockpile area. Now, also, these, um, hatched areas that you see, these are our recreation areas between the buildings, between the buildings here, uh, the small area, uh, you know, between the, the two parking areas, and then there's a small recreation area at the northwest corner of the property. That's what constitutes the, uh, the recreation area as, uh, was alluded to earlier.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Can you, uh, tell us, uh, what, um, those plantings, uh, are? The, um, that, uh, you're, you're planning? And, um, what the trees are that, um, you show in the plan?
Yes, um, let me just, um, pull this in a little bit. There's a key here. There's several different types of plantings, arborvitae's, um, we have spruces, some, um, ground cover plantings, um, mountain laurels, et cetera. The plantings in the front will be red, the, the two proposed trees here would be red maples. There's some rhododendrons. This is the, the key which explains what, what all the proposed, uh, plants are. They're all labeled with the, the, you know, the, the number and the three-digit symbol for the plants. But, but essentially rhododendrons, viburnums, uh, mountain laurels, uh, some spruces and arborvitae's along the, uh, western side.
Is, is, uh, I mean, I've, 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 I've driven down, um, uh, the Glenwood, uh, the, all the streets, uh, surrounding, and, um, it's pretty, pretty, um, urbanized. Um, I assume, uh, that there is not, um, a, a serious deer problem in that area. Am I correct?
Not to my knowledge.
Unless they, unless they eat, uh, donuts, it's speedy donuts next door. Maybe the deer eat the donuts, I don't know, I'm not sure. That should not be.
I have a question?
Sure.
Uh, Mike Muesch, there's a dog barking, it's not in my, my, uh, not my dog. Anyway, uh, Mike Mueschak here. Uh, I understand there was, uh, feedback from TMP about sidewalks. I did not, uh, see that. And I'm just wondering if you saw that, addressed it, uh, and where are we on that? Uh, I guess I could go to staff or to the applicant.
Dean, you want to talk, we're, we're proposing sidewalk in front of our, uh, property. There's, there's no sidewalk there now along, uh, seven Glenwood. And we are adding a seven-foot sidewalk there with, with the ramps for the cur- curb cuts for the driveway. There was somewhere along the line, they had us building a sidewalk from our property all the way down to Connecticut Avenue. That was one of the recommendations in the plan. It seemed a little bit, it seemed a little bit to us, a little bit outside of, uh, our little development here.
Well, the, uh, street view, there's also utility poles in the sidewalk, which I just picked up. And, you know, we would like a minimum of three feet for ADA access around those poles. We can do, always do a better job of, uh, doing sidewalks around utility poles in Norwalk, as in most cities. But, so I don't know if that's been addressed, uh, in this, because I think the existing sidewalk is not going to be a, you can see it, you can see it on the plan.
Yeah, there's the existing sidewalk and there's a.
Yeah, and it would be great to have a bump out around it. Actually, it looks like there's a little bump out around it, uh, in terms of that. But, uh, so TMP recommended a sidewalk, apparently, and I'm just go- going on what you just told me, to, uh, connect to Connecticut Avenue. I think that would be a great idea to make the area more pedestrian-friendly. I don't know where the staff is on this or any of the other commissioners, but I would be in favor of, uh, extending, asking this applicant, uh, to help with the pedestrian access with, for their own, uh, tenants to get out to Connecticut Avenue. I think it's just a stretch of parking lot, uh, basically.
It, it, it's a substantial amount of, uh, it's like a hundred and twenty feet, I think, is what they, they recommended, an extra hundred and twenty feet of sidewalk.
Hundred forty-eight feet.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Yeah, it measured a hundred and forty-eight feet of additional sidewalk.
Thank you.
The, um, well, I'm not privy to any city plans right now to improve Glenwood. We have a system now where, you know, the city looks at sidewalk improvements whenever they're going to repave. That may be many years out, so I imagine that was what the TMP's, uh, motivation was in, uh, requesting this. They'd be aware of their own schedule. Uh, so, uh, I'm, I, I'm just going to put this out there that I would be in favor of making a pedestrian connection to, to, uh, the transit out on, uh, Route One, since this is a denser project. Uh, who does that is a question, uh, I'm not going to answer here, but I, I think that the TMP suggestion was a smart one. I'll leave it at that.
Uh, Steve, does, uh, the, the staff have, um, um, an opinion on this one?
Uh, you know, it, it, it almost is like a legal question, because I don't know if we have the authority to require that past their property lines. A good question. I don't know the, if I have an answer to that right now. I mean, I could see if they own the adjacent property. I know that kind of similar thing came up when we were dealing with the renovations to the, um, the, the fast food restaurant that got approved, the, the deli down on, um, Connecticut Ave or on Westport Ave. But I think this is a little different scenario because it's not their property yet. You know, it's, it's not fronting their property past that point. I see, it's kind of a big ask. I don't know what a hundred and fifty feet of additional sidewalk would cost, but that's a big, might be a big ask.
It's also worth noting that there is existing sidewalk there. It is substandard, but it exists. And we felt that the improvement should probably fall on the adjacent property owner rather than having this application impact access to an adjacent owner's property.
Steve Ferguson, Steve, I see, uh, your hand is raised.
Yes, a quick question. Good evening. Uh, thanks, Dean, for joining. The shrubs that you're seeing to be installed on the southern side, there's already shrubs, they're already looking to double that up along the driveway. First question, and the other question is the sidewalk connectivity. I don't know if it's, uh, number thirteen or eleven, but, um, the sidewalk kind of stops, cars are parked on the sidewalk. Um, how do we, um, ensure that the sidewalk that you're looking to install kind of connects with, you know, the property going towards Connecticut Avenue and also the property north of, um, nine? And the shrubs, yeah, two-part question.
Uh, again, Dean Martin, um, uh, the shrubs you were, I'm not sure which shrubs you were referring to along the south side where we're proposing.
Yeah, there are, there's already shrubs.
Yeah, there's, there are shrubs that are on the neighboring property. They're not really on this property. There are some shrubs in the front, uh, some larger trees. There's an island, there's a parking lot down here with a, with a wider island near the eastern portion, and there are some, it's, it's overgrown in there, but these would be in addition to the ones that are, that are, you know, exist, because these, with these would be on our property. As far as the sidewalk goes, um, I can't, you know, the area or, you know, whatever's north of, of number nine, I can't, you know, attest to, to what's there. I mean, we, you know, the sidewalk that's installed, this goes up to the property line, and then we're proposing to, to construct the same sidewalk down to the south to our property line. You know, as far as cars parking on the sidewalk, uh, in front of, uh, you know, other properties, I, I can't really, really address that.
Yeah, but that wouldn't be the case with this property, right? Because I see you counted, I counted six parking spaces proposed, and there's an existing, I believe, on the, uh, north, uh, the north side, the left side. There's, there's going to be how many new parking spaces for these six units?
There's, there's six spaces in, under this building, you know, the building in the rear, there's six spaces under these, the building, the center building existing. And there are six spaces here and six spaces here, which meet the requirement for these three, the front building to the north and the new three proposed buildings.
Got it. And also the recreational space, um, you said, not you, um, but, um, the other gentleman said, I don't see his name. Uh, I don't think it was Thomas. Um, he said twenty-four hundred square feet of recreational space. I see proposed three hundred uh, in between the parking spaces, and there's a, a shaded part behind. How much, how, how many square feet is that? It's five forty-four, so where do we get the twenty-four hundred from? Because I'm, I'm counting, uh, uh, eight forty-four right now.
Yeah, there's area between the buildings here, which, which was, uh, used to be driveway, you know, building to building. And then there's area here between these building, we counted this as recreation area, along with the two in the back.
Thank you, appreciate it, Dean.
You're welcome.
Then I, man, I'm sorry, uh, who was that, Tammy?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike, I'll go after you, thank you.
Well, I'll just stay on that same, uh, theme for a second, thanks. I see, I see gaps in Glenwood Avenue all the way up to the north, as the applicant just mentioned. You know, there's, there are sidewalks on, with newer developments further up. But the road, uh, I'm just looking at Google Earth here on my phone, and the road is, uh, you know, not in great shape, and I assume the city is going to be repaving it at some point. Uh, there's a lot of cracks in it, so, uh, I guess we're going to look at, I'm just going to assume, uh, the, uh, new sidewalk in this pedestrian-friendly area, uh, to fill in the gaps uh, when the city repaves, which is a normal practice. And then at that point, we could run that sidewalk connected to the, uh, Connecticut Avenue, uh, gap. There is a new side, a newer sidewalk just to the south for a stretch, and then, uh, I guess that's in front of, in front of a parking lot, probably for the community health center, looks like a staff parking lot. And then there's, uh, the, uh, speedy donuts, which is really inadequate. You know, there's potholes and tripping hazards and everything else. I'm sure that's what TMP was looking at. So that does need to be fixed, uh, but I'm, I'm okay with, uh, the sidewalk improvements that are happening in front of this property. I think it is a big ask to get that, but I, I, uh, but I, at the same time, I agree with the TMP's, uh, motivation or the, the rationale for suggesting it, uh, just to get that connection. We do, we have had, asked, uh, applicants to do off-site improvements before, um, and I, so I think it's appropriate, but in this case, you know, I think the, uh, considering there's improvements that are needed along the whole street, and that the city is probably going to be doing a sidewalk improvement plan here at some point, hopefully in the near future, that, that could be included then. So that's a lot of words.
Mike, you know, what, when, excuse me, when we're reviewing a large project, something like the pinnacle, it seems to me we apply a slightly different yardstick in terms of what we ask the developer to do. Um, here, we're, we're simply looking at the six units. And it seems to me what, what we can ask, uh, the developer to do here is, uh, of a very different scale, you know, than we, than we would ask for a, uh, a large-scale project.
Okay, I'm not going to argue with that point. I think that's well said, so, all right, thanks.
Please, go ahead, Tammy.
Thank you. Um, just kind of going back to the building that you, the buildings that are on your property at number nine and the garages underneath. Do you have any idea if your tenants actually use their cars in there? Or are they just using it for storage? Because if I recall, it's very tight to get into those garages. Um, they have like metal columns, lolly columns of some sort, supports. And I feel like you're asking for, you know, more buildings or more apartments, and I believe these are three-bedroom apartments. So there could easily be at least two cars, if not more, per unit. And then you're kind of taking away from number nine and adding it over at number seven, but does it really add up? And I, I'm not hung up on parking per se, but it just, I'm just curious if you know how the use, the current use is right now.
I don't know who wants to take that one, Dean?
You want to take that? I don't know. I don't know what the usage is of the existing garages.
No, but Tammy, there are, there are two-bedroom units, not three. There, the, the, so these, the proposals are all two-bedroom units.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And then, when you dig up the, uh, blacktop surface at number nine, you're going to plant grass or just call it grass and garden, whatever. And then that will help give you some of that recreational space that you have?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I'm all for you guys putting in the sidewalk, and I don't think you ought to be responsible for cleaning up speedy donuts problem down there. That should be the city enforcing something else of, I, I.
I agree.
Give you a pass on that one. Um, but, you know, so many of these buildings along these parallel streets there are so overbuilt in the back, and, you know, they just turn into parking lots with absolutely no green space. So I would just like to suggest that you try to create as much green space as possible, and I applaud you for taking up some of the blacktop at number nine, even if you were forced to do it for other reasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any, any other questions at the?
Yeah, I have a, I have a quick one. I want to know where these rentals are going to fit into the marketplace. Are they affordable housing? Are they mid-market? They're obviously not luxury apartments, which we have many of, and. Are they affordable housing? Are they mid-market? They're obviously not luxury apartments, which we have many of and where, where do these fit in the market?
Uh, as being a real estate broker, I think they're mid-market. They're not, they're not going to compete with waypoint or, or any of these high end, high end. They're, they're more of a lower end apartments. I'm not exactly sure how much they get per unit, but a two bedroom unit down there is probably less than $2,000 a month per unit. So I would say they're on the moderate end of it. It just happens to be a great location, location wise to, if you work at Norwalk Hospital or or off of Connecticut Avenue, it's, it's just a great location for that. And we're in the right zone for it and we do, and it is in comprehensive plan of development as high density residential and, and we're, we, we think we have a, a plan that, that, that fits. Fits the neighborhood and fits the need of the town. It's, they're not, they're definitely not high end units.
Yeah. So you're fitting a mid-market niche.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
With all these apartments, I'm, I, I always think about, I go, I, I grew up in Norwalk and I'm just thinking, who's going to live in all these apartments? And here I can see that these are smaller and they're near, near the hospital and they're near Connecticut Avenue there. But when you look at the old US surgical and you see seven hundred and fifty units or whatever they have there, I'm just wondering who's, who's moving into all these places? I know I am because I'm, I'm getting older and ready to retire and don't want to maintain my house anymore, but but, but I, I don't know if, if it's the young kids that are doing it or young professionals. But, but there's definitely a need. There's definitely a need for these, these type of units.
Yeah, there's a need for mid-market units.
Yes, exactly. Yes.
Middle class housing.
Correct. Something we can afford, all of us.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Kevin, is there anything else in your presentation?
No, I think we, I think we've touched base. We're here to answer any questions. If the public has any questions for us, we're, we're here to answer and we'll go from there.
All right. Before we go to the public, just want to give the commissioners another opportunity to ask any questions, although you have an opportunity after the public speaks as well. All right. If there are no more questions, Brian, if you would explain to the public how they can raise their hand and access this meeting as a speaker?
Sure. So if anyone from the public would like to speak in regards to this application, you can use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen under everybody's faces. If you're dialed in on a phone, you would hit star nine.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak from the public on this development?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. If not, Mr. O'Brien, any final comments before we close the public hearing?
Yes, I would just like to thank you all for your, your volunteering and I know it's not easy putting up with developers coming in and you guys did a great job. And I just want to applaud Brian for all his help in this application. Like I said, I haven't done a special permit in Norwalk in probably 10 years. So it was very nice to let you know that your staff does a great job for you guys. I, and I appreciate Brian's effort in this, in this behalf.
Samuel's with his hand up.
Pardon me?
I, I was just saying to Brian, there's someone named Justin.
Yeah, actually I did have one question. I wasn't meant to be talking, but I did have one question for the traffic consulting. Can I ask it?
Sure.
The traffic consultant, consultant mentioned that, that like there was 11 crashes in three years. Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct. We studied the area along the site frontage and we also studied the adjacent intersections to the south at US Route One and to the north, I forget the intersection name. But yes, 11 crashes in three years at those locations.
At the location within, within what, within what kind of radius? Just out of interest.
So it's usually about 200 feet within an intersection. We consider it to be part of that intersection. So like a 200 foot bubble at either of the intersections and then just generally along the site frontage where it's proposed.
Right. Is that considered a lot or not? Is that not considered a lot? Eleven crashes in three years?
It's really not. It's, you know, I, I go through crash day a lot for this job, but it's none of them were serious too. That's another important thing to, to hone in on. There are no fatalities, no serious injuries. It was mostly fender benders. But looking at the rate of, of the crashes, 11 in three years, especially since the vast majority of them were at the US Route One intersection and may not really pertain to operations like turning in and out for the trips being generated for this development. Those are expected numbers.
Okay. Thank you. That's good to know because I'm up for a traffic discussion next. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to close.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, real quick, Mr. Chairman, before you proceed. The public weighs in. Do they have to give their address or they just?
No, we asked, we, we asked for their name and address.
Yeah, we never got that or I didn't hear it. Maybe it blanked out. I'm sorry.
Thank you for the reminder. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. And I'm going to ask JJ if when we come to action on this, which will be after our next hearing. If she would serve as a voting member. Hector and Darius.
Well, you could pick two. Nick's not here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I missed that. Then why don't we do JJ and, and Hector for the public hearing? You'll both have an opportunity to vote on this one. Darius. In, in this case, you can't. However, should we be moving? I don't think we will be, but should we be moving to a vote on the capital budget, I'll appoint you. If not, you will be selected at our next meeting so that everyone gets a fair opportunity to fully participate. We're now going to move on to.
Lou, may I just say something? But because I, if we're not going to vote till after the capital budget on this application, I wanted to just say something now because it may be a while before we get to the applicant. I'm not sure. I mean, the net, the vote. And I'm, and if the applicants weren't going to hang around, I wanted to just say something for the record. While we're still on it, I know you closed the public hearing, but I think it's appropriate. I can make a quick comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's just, I live in this neighborhood and I welcome density for lots of reasons, but the main reason is we have a severe housing shortage. I think this is a smart development. I am going to support it. I think we definitely need pedestrian improvements as TMP pointed out. But I was involved in the replacement of the three bridges over 95 with representing my neighborhood association and we asked the state for a mile of sidewalks on Route One. Believe it or not, we didn't have, not have sidewalks all the way from exit 14 all the way down to Lowe's on both sides. We had dirt paths and it was just, this is only like seven years ago. So this area has really improved a lot for pedestrians and I think it can, the infrastructure can easily handle more density. And so I just wanted to have that statement on the record that when we do come up to the vote, I'm definitely going to be in full support of this. Thank you.
Could I just add Chairman? I would be in full support as well. I think it's been well articulated. It's appropriate to the area. And I think all the angles have been reasonably well covered. So my vote would be there at the end as well.
Let me suggest in the future that we not express opinions about which way we're going to vote until we reopen to make a decision on the project. Because part of our decision-making process is supposed to include the back and forth among ourselves, which may in fact change the vote of some of the members. So I just ask in the future if we, if we could hold off on that. I mean, Mike's, Mike's comment regarding the, the density and his other comments were, were, I think perfectly appropriate. I just wish you would held off on, on expressing your, your support. But it's a minor, it's a minor point. Let's move on to the second of our public hearings. Twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, the capital budget. For those of you who either don't know or may not remember, Steve Ferguson has been ably handling this for the, the rest of the commission. And we will have, we will allow for the public hearing now. But the commission itself in all likelihood is going to be later, which will be after another meeting of the capital budget committee. So it's not likely we're going to make a decision tonight. We will open, have comment, close this hearing. The committee will meet again and once the committee has met and has developed its recommendations, that'll be brought back to the full commission for action.
Exactly. Thank you very much, Lou.
Thank you, Steve, for all the work you've done. Not only is I impressed with, with the work Steve has done and the way in which he's done it, but the depth of knowledge he has about the various city budgets. Very impressed. Kept me more than once from getting lost in the weeds on these capital budgets. All right. So we, we, we will not be having a a formal presentation on this. I think what we'll, what we'll do is we will ask the public regarding specific budgets, if they would like to comment. And I think the first of those will be the fire department. If there is anyone from the public who wishes to speak about the fire department's capital budget, again, in case you weren't paying attention when Brian explained how to raise your hand, let me ask him to do that. And we'll, we'll get this started. Brian?
Sure. So if you're here from the public and you'd like to speak on any of the fire department's capital budget requests, you can use the raise your hand feature now. It's at the bottom of your screen. And if you're dialed in on a phone, you would hit star nine.
I guess that's none for fire?
Yep, no one for fire.
Want to move to police or, or Lou, you have, you have your line items?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think that makes sense. Let's move to the police department. The same thing, anyone who wishes to comment on the police department capital budget. Please raise, raise your hand so you can be recognized.
No one for police. And I think we wanted to do finance next.
Okay.
May I say one thing, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay?
Sure.
I, I think unless the, you know, less the commissioners have a specific question for either police or fire, then they can go about, enjoy their evening if that's okay.
I, I don't have any questions and I think the fire department can walk across the street to speedy donuts now.
That'd be fine with that. So, Mr. Mr. Chair, could we just, just to save some time, could we just go right into any public having a question about a department or you'd rather go through each line item so that we can maybe get down to?
I, well, I think I'd like to get some, a, a, a few of these larger ones out of the way before we hit, specifically hit, hit the larger capital budget departments. Anyone wishing to speak about the finance department's capital budget request? Brian, I don't see anyone. Anyone wishing to comment on the Department of Public Works or its affiliated organizations like TMP?
Parks and Rec is included in DPW. So if anyone has a Parks and Rec.
Okay. All right.
No Parks and Recs. How about the library?
Yeah, library.
How about? Okay, sure.
Yes, I was, I would like to talk about the library.
Sure. If you don't mind, give us your address and your name, Lou. You want to just?
Yeah.
I'll just be quiet.
Thank you, Steve.
My name is Angel Dorleans, D O R L E A N S. And my address is Two Hanford, H A N F O R D Place. Apartment A in Norwalk.
Please go ahead with your comment.
All right. Wonderful. I'm, I'm definitely in support of the renovation of the South Norwalk Library. I'm a South Norwalk resident and I practically lived in the Stona Library for the first three years of my daughter's life. I just wanted to say that the staff is phenomenal. Great services are offered. And we're blessed to have such a wonderful library that reflects the culture that is in South Norwalk because you know, South Norwalk has a multicultural population and our library definitely a hundred percent reflects that. Only drawback is that it's a bit small. You know, especially like the children's portion downstairs, very crowded. So I would love to see the library expand, grow in size, or at least where kind of like it would be maximized in size. And it wouldn't hurt if there were like updates, you know, and kind of like evolving it to be more modern, more up to date. But I'm definitely in support of the renovation and any kind of expansion that can be offered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I saw one other hand go up. I'm going to double click. Oh, there we go.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hi. Okay. So I actually do have a question for Parks. I mean, I do have a, a comment for Parks and Rec. Did you receive?
Can we have your name and address?
That's a JJ, Lou.
JJ, do we?
JJ.
If you don't mind, JJ, if I can help you with this, when you address, when you address them, just make it a point that you're not representing or giving comments regarding the planning. It's only commissioned that you are requesting these questions as a citizen with your name and address.
Right. Okay. So, so no, the, the question is not mine. The question was emailed to me with several people CC'd. So I just wanted to make sure that that was acknowledged.
Good question. In that case, I would defer to Brian and Steve. When a commissioner gets a a, a request to respond or to answer a question, is that something that you would present Steve and Brian to us in advance? Or is this something that you would recommend it being relayed to us for it being recorded?
It'd be, the best course would be to direct any questions or correspondence to Brian or myself, and then we'll, we'll disseminate out to the rest of the group.
Thank you. So, so, so this was actually directed to you. Thank you.
JJ, in this case, well, if you could send that email to Steve and Brian and then we could probably have that be wrapped up towards the end. So they could have time to look at it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to offer Ms. Harris an opportunity to respond to the comment that, that was made about the library if she wishes to. that that was made about the library, if she wishes to.
Hello, I had a comment too. I mean, nobody, you didn't give me a chance to speak. My name is Janie Williams, and I wanted to talk about the.
I'm sorry, Ms. Williams, can we have your address, please?
Six Oak Street in Norwalk.
Thank you.
And one say that the Selno Library is a great neighborhood library, has an excellent connection, and that it reflects the multicultural diversity in the community. I know that it is a bit small, but if we do do renovation, that will maximize maximize the space. And it'll be a great service to the staff, because we have a great staff, and I just support the renovation. And I hope that is taken into consideration, because it will make a beautiful library for those coming in to the South Norwalk community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, anyone else for the library?
If anyone else from the public would like to speak on behalf of any library capital budget requests, please use the raise your hand tool now.
No one else, Brian?
Nope.
Okay, again, I'll ask Ms. Harris if she would like to respond to those two comments. Okay, if not, Steve, let's move on.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, it's Tammy. Could you please tell me what format are you following right now? Because I'm looking at the letter from Henry Dash Dashowitz, and I'm not, I want to make sure I'm following along by the department, and I don't know what where you are in our agenda. I mean, I know what topic we're on, but where are you, you know, picking the next capital budget?
Well, Steve, at this point, is handling that piece, but I think what we're what we're trying to do is leave the last couple of departments where we expect a fair number of people may have comments until the end. So that we can, we can move move this forward.
Okay, so randomly, you're just picking the smaller departments?
Ex- exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Steve, you want to keep it moving?
Sure, sure. W C, W P C A?
So anyone from the public, if you'd like to speak on a W P C A item, use the raise your hand tool now.
Okay.
Hello, I'm sorry, it's Sherelle. May I speak?
Yes, Sherelle, how you doing, Ms. Harris?
I'm sorry, I'm on two different, two different calls.
That's okay, please.
I just wanted to thank, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask you to introduce yourselves for people who don't know who you are.
Okay, I am Sherelle Harris, the Director of the Norwalk Public Library. And we actually had four requests that were presented, two of which were accepted, two of which were denied. And so I know there were others who wanted to speak, some of them had issues with audio. But I agree with the two people who spoke about the renovation of the South Norwalk Library. And I just want to clarify for the record that we are actually one hundred, roughly one hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than the request that you have before you. We have, we've secured funding for the lighting and for the furniture. So the request is a little bit less now. And, you know, I just think it's needed. We have, you know, old people older residents, you know, who've been living here for a while. We have new residents, you know, people are coming in. And it would just be nice to have an updated, modern facility that everyone can enjoy. They come in and get their books, but it would be nice to have maximized space for people to sit, enjoy, once we're done with COVID, to enjoy their library, to socialize, to get their intellect, just, you know, all sorts of wonderful things. And I had, I presented the design. They did a wonderful job, Silver Prettiresseli, of listening to us, listening to the community and the need. So I do hope that you will reconsider. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you. Let's have economic and community development.
If anyone from the public, if you'd like to speak on a economic and community development item, you can use the raise your hand tool now. Doesn't look like it, Steve.
Okay, thank you very much. And let's have historical commission.
Anyone from the public for historical commission, you can raise your hand now. Moving on.
Thank you very much. And the arts commission?
Anyone from the public for the arts commission, please raise your hand? Nope.
Thank you very much. How about the redevelopment?
Anyone who would like to speak about redevelopment agency capital item request, please raise your hand? Nope.
Thank you. And how about transportation, mobility and parking?
If anyone has any T M P comments, please raise your hand now. Nope.
Okay. Information technology.
Anyone has any I T ones? I T comments, please raise your hand now. Nope.
Okay, and human relations and fair rent?
Any questions about human relations and fair rent, please raise your hand now. Nope.
Thank you. Under operations for the commission, under operations, we have a tab. And under there, we have some facets there. So let's start with public works.
Steve, we covered public work, so I think we're good on that one.
Engineering. We have Vanessa here, right? So engineering?
Anyone for engineering? So there's a section of D P W, if anyone has any comments on engineering? Include sidewalks and things like that. Nope.
Thank you. Planning and zoning?
Anyone has any planning and zoning asks? Please raise your hand now. Nope.
Okay, building management.
Anyone has any building management requests for the capital budget, please?
To the buildings that the city owns, those improvements there in.
Nope.
Hold on, I can't get to the.
Okay, let's get into border education.
Sure. Anyone from the public has any comments on any board of education asks, please raise your hand now.
Thank you very much.
I think that might be everyone, right? It's Racy.
I think that is.
Within human relations, it encompasses A D A. Do you have any A D A questions? We just want to cover safety real quick. If there's any safety concerns with A D A, any public want to weigh in on that, now's the opportunity to do so. I pass it back off to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Steve, thank you very much. We're going to close this public hearing and move on to action on the on the public hearings. The first of those actions is seven and nine Glenwood Avenue. General comments from the commission members?
I'd like to add to my earlier comment, if I may.
Please, go ahead.
There's often questions about infrastructure and new development like this. And I know, again, I'll just add that I live in this neighborhood and have seen it improve over the last twenty years. There was flooding, and a lot of you may remember, there was always a big flood in front of the firehouse and down in front of Lowe's, which was, you know, there was another corporate office there before they knocked it down. And it was terrible, it's like two feet deep after even just a light rainfall. This, the state put in new drainage on Route One that goes down to a retention basin on ninety-five inside the on-ramp up to ninety-five from West Avenue. And that retention basin holds all the water now that used to drain from this area into the sound on inadequate pipes, which is why it backed up. So now it all goes into this retention basin, it gets filtered before it goes to the sound. So everything kind of comes out and goes into the ground and gets filtered. So I just wanted to add that in there, because the question does come up. And so I've seen the infrastructure improve greatly. The traffic flows on Route One a lot better than it used to, when they widened and had turn lanes. And so we welcomed all those improvements. We had the new bridges. So this area can definitely support more density, and this is the kind of smart infill development that increases housing units without, especially this kind, smaller scale infill, without making a big impact on, you know, on the on the neighbors or on the neighborhood. So I, that's why I'm gonna vote in favor of this.
I'll take that as a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Negative.
Okay, so Mike, Mike has moved it, and both Brian and Hector have seconded it. Brian, can you put up the language to approve?
So one thing that I'm not sure if you wanted to discuss was memo I had sent, which actually this was if you wanted to propose any additional trees to be planted within the recreation area. T M P also had wanted additional street tree, I think, which they could squeeze in between seven and nine Glenwood. I can scroll up if you guys want to take a look at that.
Yeah, unfortunately, this precious little, there has this precious little space for plantings. And so I I think anything else that can be placed in there, I don't like the use of the word squeezed, but that can fit into that area will will serve to make it just a little bit more attractive.
And and I have a question for staff. Lou, may I ask that?
Sure, go ahead.
Did I miss the T M P feedback or statement? If it was shared, I did not see it. But I just wanted to make sure that we do see those comments, the feedback, and and perhaps it was sent, and I just lost it in the avalanche of of links and applications. But was that shared with us to create the review?
Their initial comments?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, they they should have been in the package, and we posted on. I think we caught everything that they had wanted. They wanted directional signage, kind of better directional signage for in and out of the parking lot. They wanted an additional street tree, and then the sidewalk ask.
Which is that, which is not happening, this sidewalk ask, right?
Right, we're just going with sidewalks in front of the existing property.
I'm glad, well, I'm, I just want to clarify that, because I I just missed the comments. And I think we're all getting used to this new, you know, combined commission as well. So I'm glad that, you know, that that was shared, and I just, I thought I had reviewed everything, but I had missed it. All right, thank you.
All right, are there any changes that anyone wishes to suggest? Were you satisfied with the with the language?
Still, there is something in the T P M memo about conducting a traffic study or something of the sort, once the work is come.
Darius, I'm I'm sorry, I don't think you can comment any longer on this one. Because because we already have two alternates who are. But a question I would ask is the same as the one that was just raised. There there was that comment made by the developer. Brian, comment on that?
I think they they had mentioned doing some sort of parking analysis. I mean, in our opinion, they satisfied the minimum amount of parking spaces required. So we don't really have much to say that, you know, they should have to provide more other than meeting the minimum. Even with that we're kind of in the mode of reducing parking, it kind of, you know, we didn't feel like it needed to be addressed here.
Okay.
But, Mr. Chairman, if I may say something?
Go ahead, Richard.
Following up on what Brian just said, I recognize that they have met the minimum parking. And for that reason, and all of the reasons that have been stated, I am probably gonna vote for this as well. However, having driven up and down that road and the surrounding roads, I look at the size of those apartments and the development, and I'm thinking to myself, there's gonna be a minimum of six more cars parked on Glenwood Avenue someplace. So in keeping with the different way we treat the larger product projects, in the sense that sometimes we make them do accommodations on on property that they don't necessarily own. I wonder sometimes if we shouldn't look at some of the smaller projects and say, you know, the chances of there being less than two cars per unit are probably a lot less than when there's three hundred units of apartments that are available. That's my comment.
Lou, if I may?
Go ahead.
I agree with Mr. Rowena, and I think, you know, this quote recreational space, so it's like four hundred square feet per unit, that's maybe twenty by. square feet per unit, that's maybe 20 by 20. And it's going to be a grassy strip along the driveway, and I know we can't really change that right now, sitting here in this conversation, but I think it's something we as a commission should think about. Because much as, you know, people seem to want to increase the density of housing, when you do that, you have more people and you need to add parks or some other open space. And we are paving it over, and the streets around the hospital, this lot just borderline misses it, but it's going to be a lot of blacktop. And many of the other buildings that have gone this route along Glenwood and Stewart, et cetera, they're blacktop front to back. There's no green space, there's no recreational space. So I just think that we, as a commission, might want to keep that kind of in mind as we approve some of these exceptions, because, you know, we're adding to the density good, we're creating nice housing and affordable units, but we're also taking away open space, green space, which, you know, is making it hotter and doing all those other bad things, so.
You know, I think that not only should we keep this in mind, but we should keep it in mind while remembering that we're in the process of rewriting the zoning regulations. And we ought to be thinking, and we ought to be getting the staff to think about these issues. If this is something that is important to the commission, we need to convey that to Steve and Brian and staff, staff members who are working so closely with the consultants on these issues. And we ought to have those conversations, and in fact, maybe we're not too far away from a time when we should ask for a joint meeting with the consultants and the staff to discuss these kinds of issues, so that they don't get away from us while we're rewriting the regulations. But so that we we can see that these these concerns, at the very least, get a full discussion among the members of the commission, the staff and the consultants that we're working with. So I agree with both of them on this. Any further discussion on the resolution to approve? If there is none, then let's move to a vote. Brian, let's let's do this as a roll call.
Sure, so this is voting in favor of the resolution as proposed. Mr. Mueschak?
Yes.
Ms. Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Baxendale?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes, yes, sorry, I was having trouble with mute buttons, yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Patches? And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
All right, unanimous.
Okay. Project is approved. Next item is the capital budget, and as I said earlier.
Mr. Chair, before you go into that, just real quick, since we had Cheryl on the phone on the line, did Steve and Brian was able to look at that comment from that resident regarding the library? So that we can wrap that piece up, so we don't have library out there hanging?
Unfortunately, Steve is at another meeting at the moment.
Okay, Brian, do you get a chance to look at that email? That JJ sent over to you?
No, if I was copied on. But given that, I mean, I'll have, I'll see if Steve can forward it to me, and then we can address that.
Just want to take that into consideration, JJ, and I just don't want to have to come back to us.
Thank you.
All right, what will what we'll do next, as I had explained, we have closed the public hearing. The Capital Budget Committee will meet again to discuss priorities and recommendations to the full commission. And then at the commission meeting, following that, we will ask the commission to approve the recommendations of the committee. So for the capital budget, that's it for this evening. And thank.
Do we have a date for that meeting, Lou, for the Capital Budget Committee?
They, I believe, I'll get back to you on that one. I'll get back to you on that.
We don't have, we don't have a hard date.
Okay.
It will, it will certainly be this. I believe it will be this month. And then the full commission, I believe, and I could be wrong about this, but I think it is likely to be the first meeting in March. But we'll we'll publish all of that information. And I apologize for not having it at my fingertips.
I want to say it's the 16th, February 16th. I could be wrong.
Let me, I have a calendar here, let me see.
Yeah, that's the next regular meeting, and then we're kind of trying to decide right now whether to have this committee also meet that night or to have a separate night, because, so the plan is to have the full commission vote on the capital budget at your March 3rd meeting, because we need to have the letter transmitted to the mayor by March 5th, that's our deadline. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Okay, so that that's the schedule. I want to thank all of the department heads and and the division heads for joining us this evening. And with that, we'll move on in the agenda. I'm not sure whether everyone has the updated agenda. The earlier agenda showed a 2022-07 SPR had to do with a dumpster enclosure. If that's the one you're working from, that has been withdrawn. So we're going to move to C, 2022-04 SP, 26 Pearl Street, Proposed Light Manufacturing Use Within Existing Building. This is a preliminary review because it will require a special permit, and as a result, we'll have to hold a public hearing. And this is a request, as I understand it, not to require the applicant to do a traffic study. Is there someone here representing the applicant?
Yes, myself, hello, good afternoon.
Okay. Mr. Samuels?
How are you, Mr. Schulman?
Good evening, please.
Well, you know, I don't have any representatives. I feel kind of underrepresented here. Perhaps I should have had a series of engineers and architects and what have you, but, you know, I I'm in the computer business, and I'm the CEO of a computer company that was founded and started in Newark in 2014. And we started from absolutely zero, having come over here to work for a British company, actually, in 2010. And we have grown from nothing to the size we are now, which, in basically seven years, which is not actually large in terms of numbers of people. But in terms of, you know, our impact on the market, you know, we've we've done a great job. So anyway, I'm in the computer business, but I do actually have a real estate background, you know, my, I started my first job on a construction site when I was 16. My father's in construction, and I've been around it all my life. I come from Manchester in England, which was a very depressed northern town, very industrial. The textile revolution started there, and I watched, I watched Manchester get redeveloped. My father was actually, you know, a big part of it. He redeveloped a hospital. He he did several city center sites at a time where there was no residential in the city, and I watched him convert, you know, old factories to warehouses. My dad's 77 now, he lives in England, he's kind of retired, but, you know, I come from that background, so I'm very comfortable in doing all this myself, which is why I am taking on this whole project myself. I am very particular, and I am very detailed on how, and, you know, on how I do my work, and I decided that it was just as easy to do this project myself and manage it than than hire somebody and explain it all to them and kind of oversee them. So long story short, that's why I'm representing myself. I I bought this building for our business because I wanted to be in Newark desperately. I mean, I lived on Silvermine, which is three minutes from where our offices are on 25 Perry Avenue. And I started in this one single unit here. You know, this is, we're actually in a former nightclub. I don't know if any of you know the Anthrax nightclub that used to be here, there was a book written about it, which I have somewhere. And we frequently have punk rockers turning up at our warehouse here from from reliving their youth. Actually, just interestingly, just in case you didn't know, Nirvana played in our warehouse at 25 Perry Avenue, Dave Brohl from Nirvana. So that's actually over here in our warehouse, and just behind me, that's where Nirvana played. So we've been in here, we've taken every unit as it came up, side to side. You know, we took the bookstore and our business, we took their unit. We're at five units, and we are, we are completely out of space. And the business is booming, and I was desperate to find space in Newark. I could not find anything at reasonable price. I still was looking at Bridgeport, Stratford. Two weeks before I found this building, I was actually going to New Haven. I mean, it was that, I was that desperate, and I was going to drive an hour and a half every day there and back. So, long story short, we found this property. It was off market, it was a neglected property. The owners have owned it. Really, their father built the built the building in 1952, and it was a single-story warehouse. In 1958, he added an addition above the warehouse, and then in 1968, I believe, 10 years later, they added the rear of the building. And 1985, they did another, they did another rehash of the building, and I think it was Callidore's headquarters. Now, I'm not okay with Callidore. It's before my time, and I'm not, you know, obviously, I wasn't even here in the States at that time, but I think they were a big local retailer, weren't they? So it was their headquarters, this building. So it was quite a glamorous situation. And then, I guess, I don't know what what point other offices became available in Newark, but certainly Merritt 7 was built, you know, since that time, and the offices fell into disrepair. It turned into a gym, a gymnasium from, in 1996, it was a Gold's Gym. And so as you can see, I've researched the history of this building. I am very interested in the history. I'm very interested in conserving history as it happens. And so I have been quite detailed on my approach to this building. But it started as a as a manufacturing plant, and that was it, and it manufactured electric regulators. And the family that I bought it from were the sons of the gentleman that actually built it. So there was no agents involved. I basically, because I'm 500 meters down the road in Pearl Perry Avenue, I knew this building was empty, and they had one tenant, and I was ringing them for about two years, and eventually they answered my calls when their last tenant left. So the building.
Mr. Samuels?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, and I apologize for being somewhat rude. But what we need to hear from you is what it is you want, wish to do with this building, and what it is you need and want from us.
Okay, not 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 really too much, apart from to make my life easy, because it's difficult enough as an owner of a business, running a business and trying to make an application. I'm trying to get, my point is as follows, okay? The building isn't changing in really any way, shape, or form. It was empty. The owners that owned it were neglected it and hadn't treated it with any love and attention. So since I have bought it, I put in my demolition permit, and I have spent four months carefully going there five times a day myself, carefully demolishing this and turning this into an absolutely beautiful building inside. I've exposed all the wooden beams from 1952. I've got, you know, I've painted, you know, the beams gray steel. It just looks beautiful compared to how it was. I actually have some pictures on my computer, but you're probably not interested. One day you can pop over and see it. The point is, is I'm keeping the spaces as they were. I am reinstating what was the former gym to a into my warehousing area. And behind it, the units that were already separated are going to be my engineering. So if you look at the plan, I think I've demolished about 10 partition walls with a square footage of maybe 1,500 square foot, so I'm doing very little. The reason I am in the special permit situation is because it was a gym, even though it was formerly not a gym. I have to be in a special permit, but the point is, in regards to the traffic aspect of this building, there was probably the last tenant, and bear in mind, it was mainly empty for many years. The last tenant, though, that was there, I think, LA Fitness or Planet Fitness, they're called, probably maybe had 3,000 plus members. So there was cars driving in and out all the time, right? Not only that, but what, I don't know if anybody residents of Newark know this. If you live here longer than me, you probably do, but what I discovered was the car park was left open at night and all hours of the day. And the things that I, I mean, have been going on in that car park are, you know, yeah, we shouldn't, we shouldn't discuss. So a lot, I've spent a lot of time, you know, take, get rid of the traffic that was in there all hours of the night, let's put it that way. So now it will be gated a lot. The only traffic that will be coming in, because we are, we are teneting, let's say, you can see in the plans, but I think it's something like 21,000 square foot initially will be teneted, the rest of it will be empty, so that's less than half. And we only have 20 employees here, we have some overseas. We will be teneting very little. I actually think of the 192 spaces, which I'm sure Brian had less than that in the application. I think he put 143, but I seem to think there's more. There's almost 200 car parking spaces. We will be using very few. If it's 15%, I would be extremely surprised. So our traffic impact is extremely minimal, and we are bringing this back to an industrial use in an industrial area. I mean, if anybody knows the street in this area, it's entirely industrial. And so we are really reverting it back to its former use. It's a beautiful site, has a river on one side, and it has, you know, the mountains on the other, and I am keeping everything the same. I like trees, and I like rivers, I like fishing, I like hiking, so I'm not touching anything there. And.
And Justin, you just want to go over what what SSN does?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, that's a good point, actually, Brian. So it's very important that you all know this, so we 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 basically sell the computer equipment that runs corporations, governments, data centers, even cities like Newark, our clientele, whether we, whether we're supplying directly or we're the warehousing operation, we're the actual stockist of the product. I mean, we have shipped to NASA. We got a call two, three months ago from the Federal Reserve, they needed a part on a Friday night, we had it. So we stock all these very difficult current parts, but also quite hard to find parts, like these kinds of things. So server drives and server memory. And the point about it, which is very important for you to understand from a traffic point of view, is that it's very, very small and very high value. So we can have a little box like this, this is, let's say, a memory box. And box can be worth, you know, $1,000, and we can have 25 of them in a small plastic tray. So we've managed to operate, you know, our approaching, you know, $30 million business here from 7,000 square feet, which is unbelievable, because if you are moving that much in furniture, or if you are moving that much in, you know, anything else, it would be extremely difficult to do it from a small space, but what's happened But what's happened is, as our business has developed, we are, there's more and more opportunities coming our way. We work with all the major manufacturers like HP. We work with Dell, we work with all those kind of guys. And we buy all their excess inventory and we remarket it. And um, we need more storage and we need more engineering. So um, but we, we are very tight on staff. Um, we don't, we don't employ tons and tons of people for our revenue and what have you. So it's not gonna have a big impact. But the point, the point about it, just interestingly for everyone, I don't wanna keep everybody here any longer. But, you know, there is a big political movement about the sh- the chip shortage at the moment. There is a huge uh shortage of chips around the world. And Joe Biden and the rest of the team are trying to encourage companies to address that chip shortage. Well, what's currently been happening is that the excess computer equipment from the market has been going to China. The Chinese have been deconfiguring our products, removing the chips and selling them back to us for a fortune. So they've been buying our products, our old products for nothing and and selling them back to us. So I am trying to, to, to take the, the bull by the horns and do that here in the States. And this is gonna be my manufacturing plant for it. So I haven't developed that business yet, I've developed the whole strategy. I just haven't had the space to do it. So, you know, this is a great, good tech use for Norwalk. It's an industrial area, Norwalk needs as much industry as it can get. So at the end of the day, you can build as much housing as you want, but we need places to employ people, right? And manufacturing and and this kind of thing is important. So that's what we do. I, I, I could probably talk forever, but I don't think there's much more I need to say. And you can ask me whatever questions you would like, how's that?
Um, how many employees do you have?
In America, twenty.
In your facility, twenty?
Yeah.
Okay. And what are the hours that they work?
Good question. That's a great question, because it's important. We only work from nine to six and we very rarely work late. We very rarely need to work weekends. In fact, I, I, oh my God, I find it very difficult to get them to work extra hours.
Resolution says you work Monday to Friday as well, so you don't work weekends?
No, we're not open weekends now. I wish I could be open weekends, but no.
A question, Lou?
What? Go ahead, Mike.
The uh, you said you're gonna be moving into more shipping, if I understood that correctly. Uh, does that mean UPS and FedEx trucks coming in? And uh, you know, uh, adding to some traffic? Are you gonna ship, are you gonna ship some other way? Or is it going to be the trucks coming in and picking up packages and taking them?
So, so it's a good question. We're not moving more into shipping. Certainly, the last thing we want to do is ship. We rely on, on the shippers to do that. But what we are, what, what, what I did say perhaps, you know, is that we, we are, we are building more inventory. And more inventory means more shipping. But the inventory that we sell is so small and such high value that we could double our turnover and our inventory. And we're going from, I think we said six trucks a day. Um, three of those being the small trucks that deliver packages to your houses. Uh, sorry, four of those, maybe we get two large trucks a day. So we would be going from two to four if we even doubled our turnover, which would be a great stretch, you know, I'm not expecting, I don't have any delusions of grandeur that I expect to be doing that anytime soon. But if we did, I mean, that would be the impact.
This is, this is actually um uh going to be a fairly simple matter for us.
Okay.
Um, we're, we're going, uh, we're asked to uh eliminate um the requirement for um a traffic study. Um, and uh, we're going to have to hear this all over again. So I, I think we can safely uh um cut off our, our conversation at this point, uh, because it's gonna be pretty straightforward matter. Uh, what we need to do is get it on our schedule for a public hearing. Uh, Steve, Brian, do we um have a date? We can um get this on our public hearing schedule?
We um preemptively ran the notice to go tomorrow so that we could have it on for your February sixteenth meeting.
Okay, so let's put it on this, it's on the schedule then for uh February sixteenth. Um, Mr. Samuels, let me just suggest, there are only two things we need to hear um from you really is, one will be the justification for not doing a traffic study. And I think frankly, that's a pretty straightforward matter.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, um, and uh, you know, again, a, a brief description of what it, what it, what it is you do um and um why you don't require, why you believe you don't require a, a traffic study.
Right.
So I, I, I think we can, we can handle this uh quickly and efficient, efficiently at uh the meeting on the sixteenth.
Right.
Um, and I, I, I think that that's it. Um, I think, I think we're good for the sixteenth. We look forward uh to seeing, seeing you then.
Thank you very much. I hope I didn't talk too much.
I have one suggestion.
Sure.
Mr. Samuels, uh, don't take this as an insult, because your Manchester accent is charming. But, but you used the word inventory and it took me a while to figure out you were saying inventory. So just be aware that when you're talking, uh, that that, we don't understand what inventory is.
Can I make one point?
I, I would suggest maybe one of our uh pa- our commissioners here uh might uh knew, knew what Brian Backs and I knew what that was, but I had no idea what you were talking about for a while.
Can I make one point? It's not only my, my accent you have to, to deal with, it's my business. I recently tried to explain my business to an investment banker from Goldman Sachs, who, who was advised ex, ex Goldman Sachs, who was, who I wanted to have, get some advice from on various issues. He couldn't understand my business. Where it's a, it's quite a complex business. And uh, it's, it's not something that, you know, is easy to explain in a minute, but I'll try and keep it brief. We just sell computers, how's that?
Yeah, you can summarize it by service and reference.
Let's uh, let's move on to uh next item. Uh, oh seven dash oh nine SP Avalon Bay. Um, Eight Norton Place, uh bond release request for parking space waiver. Um, report and recommended action. Mr. Galante, you representing uh Avalon Bay in this matter?
Mr. Galante is representing us. My name is Michael Re and I work with Avalon Bay. So I, I figured I would start with the X uh background, if necessary.
Sure, just go, go right ahead.
Yeah, I live in Nineteen Frost Street in Arlington, Massachusetts. I work for Avalon Bay in the asset management department. I'm joined today by Michael Galante from Hardisty in Hanover, our parking consultant, and Glenn Moran, who's with Avalon Bay Construction. Um, just as background, Eight Norton Place is a two hundred and forty unit multifamily rental property that was built in around two thousand fourteen. Um, Avalon Norton Place is now called Avalon East Norwalk. We're requesting the release of the two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar parking waiver surety bond associated with the zoning commission's approval for a parking waiver for sixty-seven spaces. It was approved by the zoning commission back on April twelfth, two thousand twelve. Um, the parking surety bond was obviously required per zoning regs and special permit. Required to, we were required to post the surety bond for two years to confirm that the provided three hundred and twenty-five parking spaces were sufficient. We actually have three hundred and thirty-nine, but regardless, um, it's now been about eight or nine years since we posted the bond and about six or more years since the completion of the apartment complex. So the two-year period to hold on to the surety is now up to six or eight years. Um, last year, we discovered the surety bond was still being held by the city. So we engaged Mr. Galante um to conduct a parking demand study to assess the demand for parking spaces to evaluate whether the provided three hundred and thirty-nine parking spaces are sufficient for the community. So Mr. Galante is present tonight to present the findings of the report. In short, we think the demand study shows the parking demand is, is, the parking supply is adequate for the demand um at the, at the community. Um, in fact, the property for, you know, a period of eight or ten years has been on average ninety-five percent leased, which, you know, shows, further shows that parking really isn't an issue to maintain the property. If, if parking was a problem, we wouldn't be, you know, so well occupied during our, our operating period. But like I said, uh, we're requesting the release of the parking waiver surety bond. And um if you have questions or you want Mr. Galante to present uh his report and findings and answer any questions, we're, we're here to, we're here to do so.
Um, we, uh, we all received uh Mr. Galante's uh letters. Uh, but um if we could have a uh, just a, a brief um uh summary of those brief letters uh would be helpful. Uh, I mean, I was um uh quite surprised uh when I, when I first saw this uh item. Uh, I, I can't recall that we've ever held a bond for so long.
Yeah, it's um, I know, I know, trust me. Uh, you know, as it happens, you know, from time to time, developers move on to the next project or move on to the next company. And the responsibility to sort of keep an eye on, on these kinds of long-term um, long-term obligations kind of falls to somebody else and falls to somebody else. So we uh, we're thoroughly embarrassed that we've been holding on to this money. You've been holding on to this money for this long and, you know, um, but hopefully uh we can, we can relieve you of that burden.
Michael, please, go ahead.
Yes, okay, thank you. Mike Galante, Hardisty in Hanover, I'll give you a quick overview of the purpose of the parking study, uh, which was explained already. But the whole idea of the study was to show that there's more than adequate parking for this facility, this development with two hundred and forty units and about three hundred and thirty-nine parking spaces. To do that, we did actual parking counts on an hourly basis back in December, uh Thursday, December ninth and Saturday, December eleventh, um, six AM to eleven PM at night. Overnight, we captured that by counting at the end of the night at eleven PM and again at eight, at six o'clock in the morning. Results of the study show that during the weekday, we had occupancy of around fifty percent during the day. And keep in mind, many people work at home now, things are a little different. On a Saturday, that parking demand was seventy to eighty-three percent, so well below, you know, the one hundred percent of, of all the spaces. And overnight, which is the more critical one, uh, that tells the story, we were operating at eighty-eight to ninety percent of occupancy. So there was always a reserve of about ten, twelve percent. Uh, in the parking world, if you have that reserved parking available or vacant spaces, that's, that's more than adequate to accommodate the needs of a, of a development like this. So in essence, what the study shows is that we have enough parking uh for our tenants and there's no need to uh provide any more parking, which was the concern of the commission when this was approved several years ago. And we actually did the traffic studies and everything back several years ago. So that's, that's really what the traffic, that's what the parking study says, that we have adequate parking.
Um, is there a motion to approve the release of these bond funds? Mr. Musack, is that a question or?
I, I made the motion.
Okay.
I think it's a no-brainer.
Is there, and Tammy is seconding. Um, I think we can do this by a show of hands. Uh, are there any questions among the commission members?
I, you do have um two point two, two alternates to vote.
Well, uh, I had promised Mr. Williams um that he would be next in line. And uh, then JJ will be next. And uh Hector uh will be uh first in line uh for our next meeting. Uh, okay, with that, um, I'd like to see a show of hands, all those in favor of releasing the bond. Um, it is unanimous. Okay, take your money and run.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Probably a good thing it didn't go to a abandoned monies at the state, right?
Right.
That's a good point.
Thank you, can I?
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Um, next, uh, approval of the minutes for our January nineteenth meeting. Um, did everybody receive them? I, they were, I believe they were online.
I did not receive them.
Uh, Steve?
Brian, did those go out separately or just the link?
Um, I honestly can't, I think we sent the links out. I can make sure we do a better job at getting those out.
All right, why don't we skip this? Let's put it back on the agenda for the next meeting and make sure that uh uh everyone has an opportunity to see uh, uh, the minutes before the next meeting. Uh, okay? Um, comments of director, Steve?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. One, um, I think I sent out the link to the public survey, the second survey related to the waterfront study. If you didn't get a chance to see that or didn't get it, please let me know and I'll resend it. If you have anybody in groups you normally converse with, please forward that on so we can get as much feedback as possible. Um, second thing is really a scheduling question that you were talking about earlier related to the capital budget. Um, so the, how we kind of thought the process could unfold would be that the subcommittee would reconvene, go through the individual items. And, you know, hopefully that's all done. They have done their homework all ahead of time. They go through the individual requests and then simply all, all, the, the task is really, the whole commission needs to do this as well, is simply, in your own opinion, do you feel that the request made is consistent with the P O C D or not? I have the uh final uh budget from the, the CFO and I'm gonna email that out. It's basically a spreadsheet of all the requests. And we added columns at the end of it just to indicate um yes or no, consistent with the P O C D. And we put the P O C D code in there as well. So for quick reference, and I'll give you the link to the P O C D just in case you wanna click back and look at that individual um code to make sure it's all there. So that will have to happen in a separate meeting.
Steve, a question, question about that. Um, I, I've seen the news stories where Mr. Dashwood is uh indicating um that there are some serious financial concerns that the city has. Um, could you make sure that each of the members of the uh uh capital budget committee get a copy of that letter? Um, I'd like everyone to have that in front of them as uh we're going, going through this uh process.
Sure, we can get that.
It, it was already attached.
Yeah, we received that on January thirtieth.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Um, okay.
It was an attachment in our meeting for tonight, Lou, just in case you're looking for it.
Okay.
That's what I was referring to earlier when I was asking you where you were on your list. I was, that's what I was looking at.
Okay. Yeah, we, we've got that, we just posted it on the website too, so it's up there.
Okay. I'm sorry, Steve, for interrupting, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, no problem. So, so we'll, we'll send out the sheets um tomorrow. I have, they're all done. Um, Mr. Cantor is not here tonight, did ask me a bunch of different questions specific to a lot of the um departmental requests. So I forwarded those out to those various departments and they provided responses. So I will send that as a separate attachment as well. So the, the first question is for, it's really a subcommittee question. Do you want to meet after the uh regular meeting on the fifteenth? Or do you want to, I, I, I don't know how long that'll take. That meeting might take a couple hours, maybe hour and a half, two hours, I don't know. I'm never good at predicting that. Or do you wanna try to target a separate night for that meeting?
I would say a separate night. Um, I only say that because even tonight, with the public comments being significantly reduced, um, this could have been a four-hour meeting. Um, so um, I think it'd be wise if we just had a separate date, unless you all have other thoughts about it. Um, so, um, I think it'd be wise if we just had a separate date unless you all have other thoughts about it.
I, I am in agreement for a separate day.
Okay, so we can work on a separate date, um, and then once the subcommittee, sub, the subcommittee will come back to the full commission at your March third meeting and then the, the commission as a whole will have to vote on the final document, you know, and the final document is basically that, that spreadsheet indicating and we'll flag the items that if you, you find any that are inconsistent with the P O C D. And then also any set of rec, you know, items that you would like to see the city undertake in terms of recommendations, whether that's, um, more bike lanes, you want to see more sidewalks, you want to see more money put into the board of ed budget, those kind of things you can indicate in, uh, in a memo back to the mayor's office. So that, that's kind of how that would.
And go ahead, Tammy, I'm sorry.
No, it's JJ.
Oh, I'm sorry, JJ.
No, no worries. So, um, in preparation for the March third meeting, um, I do see that there is, um, um, an availability for the twenty-first, which is the president's day. Is it possible to have the meeting that evening or no?
Is that a Monday?
It's a Monday. Yeah.
Um, maybe. City Hall's technically closed, so I don't know.
Right, that's why I, right. I'm just trying to coordinate, I'm just trying to coordinate, you know, um, other committees as well.
Sure. I don't mind doing the meeting as long as I'm here. Just a question if I take advantage of the day and go, grab my snowboard and go. I may do that too.
Uh, Steve, is it appropriate, uh, for the committee, uh, to consider, um, what the, um, CFO, um, uh, i- is saying in his letter?
I think you can, but I don't think, I think your role is independent of that. I think you're, you're acting as a screening process for the other, um, bodies that, that adopt and vote on the budget. So you're, you, you're technically, there, there shouldn't be any items in there that aren't consistent with the P O C D. And, and I know the, the categories are broad enough where any department should be able to find something. They can say, well, yeah, this is consistent. But then I think you've got to really just read through the materials that were presented to say, well, yeah, while this may technically be consistent with the P O C D, I think it's a bit of a stretch to say it, it, it's not. And I think another thing that would be relevant to that question would be, is this like a, a first-time request? Or is this something that like that individual department had had on their wish list for three years now? You know, if it's something that wasn't in the P O C D and it's kind of a pie in the sky request, then I think you, you can consider that as well.
Okay.
Also, I recommend the, the other commissioners is to look at the P O C D prior to the meeting, just to comb through it, so you can get a better idea. Um, it would help, um, when we're going over the each department.
I, yeah, uh, we have comments for commissioners yet, uh, Lou, or, yeah, I've got that for you.
It depends on whether Steve's finished.
I'm done.
Okay, go ahead, Steve. Something you want to say?
Yes, just wanted to thank you all. Um, the public part of the capital budget today was significantly decreased. Uh, that means, uh, we as a group is doing something that is not just transparent, um, but we're given, um, uh, the public an opportunity to see what we're doing. So there weren't too many concerns. This is the first, as some of you were calling many years. I don't know if Baxendale and Tammy and Mike can stare. I can't see them, but, uh, you know, this sometimes is a long line for parks, erects and border ed and other things. So I'm happy that we were able to accomplish what as a commissioner we set out to do is, is to fully under, have the department heads understand what, what we do ahead of time. And the fact that they put their capital budgets out five years in advance, uh, that we can isolate, that kind of helps this process move forward. So I want to thank everyone for their help and dedication and input.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
Um, I want to, uh, apologize for the delay in the, uh, meeting. I'm not certain what, uh, the problem was. Um, this is, as, as Brian kindly pointed out, this is the fir-, I think this is the first time it's happened to me, um, in, uh, uh, at least, uh, two years. Um, and secondly, um, you know, we, we operate and I think we, uh, unless we see that there's a problem, we can afford to operate uh, somewhat informally. I don't think it's necessary for people, uh, members of the commission to ask my permission before asking a question of, of, um, uh, people who are giving a presentation. Just go ahead, ask your question. Um, you know, if we find, uh, uh, that we're talking over one another, uh, uh, too frequently, um, or we're causing some other problem, um, we'll, we'll deal with it. But I have not noticed, uh, in the past, and I haven't noticed in our last two meetings, that that really has been a problem.
And that'll be the first time I'll disagree with you, Lou. This will be the first thing I'll disagree with you with. I think ha- having that, um, kind of helps set the, the tempo because things could be dragged on a lot. And I think for me, I can't speak for no one else, just for me, I think it's good to, to actually defer in many cases because it, it avoids, um, you know, the many different thoughts because we all have thoughts and opinions. And I think by deferring back to the chair, it kind of helps the tempo. I'm just talking for myself. Anyone want to comment on that?
My, my, my feeling, um, is I don't want to do anything that might stifle um, conversation, um, or, uh, members of the commission expressing, uh, their opinions or, uh, uh, asking questions. And I think that, um, by people having to defer to me in that way, it just, to me, it, it seems a little artificial and unnecessary. And again, I think, you know, if we see that, uh, it's causing a problem, uh, we can stop it or we can find another way of addressing it. Uh, but I, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't want to do anything that is, uh, going to stifle you getting, um, the answers you need in order to make, uh, thoughtful decisions.
Understood.
Lou.
Well, I think the last two weeks, Chairman, have shown that it flows quite easily. When one or two people have spoken over each other, one has deferred to the other. It's worked very smoothly, I think.
Thank you.
I, I would agree with that, Lou. And I just, you made a comment earlier this evening, um, when two of the commission members let it be known whether they were going to support or not the applicant. And I am wondering if you think, you know, whether that's appropriate or not, if you could opine on that. I think it would be helpful for the rest of us. I mean, I've been on one of these commissions before, but some of our new members have not. And I don't know how you did it in the past in zoning, um, and in the planning commission. It was just a few people that sort of let know how they were going to vote, but not everybody did. So whatever you want to share with us on that, I think would be helpful for the.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think what, what I, what I said, um, i- you know, holds and, and, and that is, uh, we're all supposed to have, uh, the same amount of, um, uh, information about matters. And, um, commenting before the appropriate time to comment, uh, seems in, inappropriate. Uh, i- in terms of, uh, the possible impact it may have on, uh, other people voting, uh, in a, in a given way. This is the first one, not the second one, Brian, right?
Well, for me, it's just that, uh, it's the, um, we're, they're still waiting on DPW clearance on some underground pipes or something like that. There's sort of some things going on, but this is easy, this could be easy uh, corrected. I mean, I, I think, speaking on behalf of the commissioners, I, I think, you know, yielding to that until decision is made, um, at the same time is good. So we'll just make the, the needed adjustments.
Yeah, well, I mean, what I was, what I was referring to is, uh, expressing, uh, um, an opinion uh, on how you're going to vote, um, before we've closed, uh, gone into the discussion section among ourselves of, uh, the, uh, public hearing. That just feels like the right way to do it.
Um,
For the record, I want to just add, the format of that was not what we were used to on the planning commission where we took all the public hearings together and then did the action. Because I felt like the applicant, it would have been a courtesy to the applicant to do the action immediately following the public hearing before we moved on to another public hearing, which we thought might be quite long. It turned out not to be. So as a courtesy to the applicant, I wanted them to know that they had support before they left, uh, just as a courtesy. And I, and in planning, we often did discuss our opinions, uh, before we actually made the motion. Uh, Fran would go, our chair would go around and ask the entire commission what, how they felt and what they, where they, where they were on the thing. And it, maybe that was inappropriate. I'm not sure. I don't, I never thought it was. But it added to the commission. But I only did that tonight because I saw that potentially our action was going to be hours later after the applicant had presented and we had closed the public hearing. That's the only reason I actually said anything, but I'd be happy to keep my mouth shut until we make a motion and that, that's fine. Uh, it was an unusual situation for me because I never saw someone have, I never saw two public hearings in a row and then the actions later in, at the end of the meeting. I, I, we've always done it. Actually, you know, hearing, action, hearing, action. That's.
And Mike, and Mike, that's a good point you made because I thought we weren't making a vote on it until we got the clearance from DPW for the pipe, the underground pipe. So maybe we should have just made, uh, of, we should have voted after the public hearing, I guess. So I don't know what the delay was in that point, but.
We, we, that simply isn't the way we do it. I don't know, uh, uh, that the way we've always done it is necessarily the right way. I, I would rely on, um, input from, uh, Steve on that.
I, I think you could do it either way. I, I mean, the way the agenda is for this meeting was structured was, was you take action after the hearings are closed. Personally, I, I like to do, I, I mean, I know like some, if you had a four-hour hearing and you're tired and then trying to remember the first hearing that you heard, all the specifics and details. I don't know if that's the best practice. I kind of like the idea of voting after each item because it's fresh in your mind. Uh, you know, you just heard all the testimony. You can take action at that point. We just have to word the agenda a little differently. But I think to your point, Mr. Chairman, I think the comments should be made wh- when you're in the discussion of that particular item. And I, I'm personally, I don't think it's a problem if somebody says they're in favor of something or not in favor because that's kind of, I think that comes out in whatever their comments are anyway, because you're going to know if they're, if they're saying, well, I don't think this is a good idea or that's a bad idea, that you, you've got a sense of where they're going anyway.
And the distinction, just to be clear, was the hearing had just been closed. So I was not stating an opinion during the public hearing. So, once the hearing's closed and no one else, and there's no influence on any member of the public of what I would say, that's when I feel like the floor is, is open. But I, but I'm, I'm happy to defer and I'm not upset in any way by being told I shouldn't have opened my mouth when I did. It was just.
I thought I was a little more subtle than that.
I'm fine. I, I, I'm okay to, uh, to delay any discussion. And then again, that was a courtesy for that applicant. That's all.
If, if the, if the, uh, uh, commission members, uh, want to discuss this further, we can put it as an agenda item for our next meeting. And we could, well, and we could, and we could vote on whether we want to.
I think, I think we're good.
There's nothing wrong with that.
I'll be accommodating. He won't mention it, uh, next time.
Go ahead, Galen. I'm sorry.
We don't need another.
Thank you.
Why to discuss it. Do it one way or do it the other way.
If I may just interject, I think if there's anything to get from this entire conversation is that approach matters and communication and structure matters.
And I, and Darius, I agree with you. I think it's really important. You know, the public comes to us, they are perhaps nervous, unlike the last gentleman. Um, was, you know, very forthcoming and sharing. It was kind of nice. It was kind of a breath of fresh air. But, but they're looking to us, they're sitting on pins and needles and, and I do think we ought to follow a certain process. And so if you, you have the hearing and then you have comments frequently, we're not going to have any public comments. And then you close the hearing and then the commissioners can have the discussion and then the vote. And it would seem logically to me that you would do it one application at a time because, like you say, Lou, if it's a big hearing, you might have had a short one, then you might have something that's very long and involved. It could go on for a couple of hours and then you go back to the first one, like, I, I don't see the sense in that. Um, and Steve Ferguson, you know, that one thing about the DPW pipe, then maybe we just have to wait on that whole application one more time, but that, maybe that doesn't happen that often. I don't know.
Well, the, you know, the, I, I think I'm, listen, however you guys want to do is fine. We can tweak the agendas very, it's not any lift for us. I mean, just to not go backwards, but for, for things like the DPW pipes, if it's something, you know, based on our conversations with DPW, that it's just an engineering thing they've got to work out. Staff's preference is to move stuff out the door because otherwise if we keep backing stuff up on the agenda, when you start to actually get busy, it's going to be problematic.
We have more than once approved, uh, a project uh, dependent on action by another, um, body. Uh, like if they don't have all of their, uh, uh, SEAC uh, approvals, we can approve subject to their receiving all of their SEAC approvals.
And wasn't.
And we'll, we'll flag.
Standing in zoning to move things forward at a better pace? Wasn't that part of the reason the common council wanted this to take place?
Yeah, a- and we'll, and if there's something that's outstanding, that's significant, we'll, we'll tell you that it's outstanding and don't move on this until this matter gets resolved.
I'm, I just want to say I'm going to take inventory of everything we just said.
Richard?
So what's, so what's the decision, Chair?
I, 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 I never really did understand why we closed a public hearing and then didn't vote on it. Um, so I, I'm actually in, in favor of that, if that's a rules change that we can do. And then Lou, one, one comment that I wanted to make, um, you pointed out to, uh, Mike Muschak and, um, and I forgot who else made the other comment about waiting until, um, the vote time for discussion purposes. And so when Mike made his comments that he made, you said, I'm going to take that as, um, as a, uh,
An approval.
An approval.
Yeah.
Right. Motion to approve. And I, I, you know, I don't think we should do it that way. I, I really do think that, that every member should be polled uh, before a motion is made, my opinion.
Well, I think you do, but I think the, the order is somebody makes a motion and then they say there's an emotion approved, then you discuss that motion. And then that's when the discussion on everybody's two cents on what they think about that the application occurs. And then you vote on that motion and the motion either carries or the motion fails.
Right. What, what I'm hearing.
That works too, I guess.
What, what I'm hearing, um, is it, it sounds to me as, um, if most of the, uh, commission members would prefer to take action, uh, on a matter immediately following, um, the, uh, closing of the, uh, public hearing. So let's see if we can confirm that with a, uh, vote. All those in favor of, uh, changing the way we do it so that we, um, close the public hearing and then uh, uh, vote on that matter and then move on to the next. What, do by a show of hands? Um, that looks like unanimity to me. All right, let's, um, from now on, let us, um, uh, do our agendas, uh, to reflect that.
Yeah, and I don't want to vote.
I just want to say that what Steve was saying is the way parliamentary procedure works. You know, you get the, you make the motion, then you discuss the motion is versus just discussion that's sort of free-flowing and then making a motion.
Um, I always try, although it's possible that, um, I may, may forget from time to time, but I don't think often. When there's a motion, I, I, I ask for discussion of the motion.
No, no, I know it, but I mean, we wait for the discussion till after the motion.
No discussion while a, a, a vote is on the floor is what you're saying.
Oh, just the opposite.
No, in normal parliamentary procedure, you make a motion, then you discuss the motion. But it doesn't matter. Just forget it. I shouldn't even.
Yeah, and the only other thing I was gonna, the only other thing I was gonna mention was that we. The only times that we've kind of asked for kind of like a straw vote on things is there's been. To, because sometimes if we have to draw up a really lengthy resolution on things. We kind of don't want to do a negative and a positive, we kind of want to get a sense of which way you want us to go. And then we'll draft the resolution off that, because it's sometimes on the really involved applications, it's a lot of work and I don't want to do it twice if I can avoid that. So that's the only time we try to get a sense of which way you want us to go.
Well, all, um, I have to, I have to leave, um. Surely, I've had a rare day, I started really early, so my head is like mush right now.
I I think, Steve, we're almost finished.
Oh, we are, okay.
Darius, you had a comment.
Yes, so I was wondering, or I just wanted to put this in everyone's head about a possible retreat or workshop or something. I know that uh there are other different boards or. Entities within the city that do it at the beginning of their term or the year. To kind of organize or figure out how they want to structure or go about things. Set entity, so that's something we wanted to discuss or look into somewhere down the line.
I it, you make, you make a good point and I I I think that it had always been Steve's plan. Uh, to do some training um on on both the planning side and the zoning side. Um, as schedules permit.
I think it's a great idea as well.
And we do have to do the bylaws too, so that feeds right into it as well.
Right.
Great.
That's all I.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Well, let me just ask, are there comments, any other comments from commissions? Michael, did something you wanted to say?
No, I just wanted, oh, me, Michael? No, I just wanted to make a motion to adjourn.
Well, I think we should discuss that motion.
All right, we we have a motion, we have a second, uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, we are. Stay well.
Night. Stay well, everyone.